Good evening and welcome to our September study session. This is where we dive a little deeper into some progress monitoring topics. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with roll call Director Smith.
Here.
Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
I'm here.
And Director Savala.
Here.
Okay, and I'm also here, obviously. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Stone.
Thank you so much Director Sproll. Welcome to everyone this evening. We're glad that you're here for the first study session of the 24-25 school year. We do have a number of presentations this evening and I'm just gonna jump right in because we have some of our student advisory reps here and let them share a little bit about our recent meetings and some of the work ahead. So we have Emerson, Nadeline, and Avery with us this evening. When they're done, we'll go into the strategic plan work and talk a little bit more about that, but I'd invite our student advisory reps to unmute and kind of share with the board what's been going on.
Hi, I'm Emerson Haney. I'm a senior at Columbia River.
And I am Nadeline Davisay. I'm also a senior at Columbia River.
Hi, I'm Avery. I'm a senior at ITech Preparatory.
So there are three priority areas we focused on at our workshop last Tuesday. The first priority we heavily focused on was student voice. For example, Skyview does taco talks where they invite students to eat and the student advisory representatives ask questions. They have used topics including grading, belonging, respect, and engaging activities in class.
And you know, as student advisory, each school has a set of goals to get student feedback, whether that is through something like taco talks or a student voice council. As we collect student feedback, we can take it back and work in ways where students and people feel as if they belong. Some things that the group came up with were like identity lessons, kindness chalk messages, which were cutely inspired by middle schools, and positive messenger or message messages, scavenger hunt, BU day, and a multicultural day. These are all students, all things that students plan to do or have done.
While the workshop was heavily focused on our priority areas, we also spent a lot of time getting to know each other so our student advisory can be as effective as possible. We played name games and just general icebreaker activities. And for our leadership summit in the spring, we want it to be a student-led and focused on our belonging interventions. And we hope to teach a broader student body on small ways they can be a leader and express to them that their voice matters.
Belonging interventions are interactive presentations given to students at the beginning of the school year. These interventions are aimed mostly at underclassmen and students who feel though as if they do not belong or are not familiar with the school that they currently attend. This would include student testimonials to show if students feel that belonging is increasing. And to explain what this process would look like, we would actually pass this off to Avery.
Thank you. That was, that described it pretty perfectly. I just wanted to give some extra details on kind of the mechanics of what these belonging interventions would look like and kind of the effect that we would hope to have with them. And so in the research that I've done and other student advisory members have done, we've determined that we feel that belonging can snowball. To say it can either snowball up or students, they notice things around them that make them feel they belong more and that they make them feel they're part of a community, or it can sometimes snowball down where students then notice things that make them feel like they're not part of a community. And so these belonging interventions are meant to make sure that at the beginning of a year, especially aimed at transitional years such as sixth grade and ninth grade, that students feel that they have a normal feeling when entering these new grades that may be feeling they don't belong as much or feeling uncomfortable in their environment is a natural feeling and that it can pass with time. And so that's what the main focus of these interventions would be in the process. I'll just run through this really quickly, is that the students would all group up in their zero periods or absos somewhere where they'd all be together. The teachers would introduce the belonging interventions as the activity ended, getting everyone comfortable at the start of the year. Teachers would then present the student testimonials that we may collect through senior exit interviews or separate interviews that we might conduct at the leadership summits or student advisory meetings. And then the testimonials would detail how the students possibly at the beginning of their educational experience felt that they maybe didn't belong, felt uncomfortable in the situation. And then we would go on to talk about how they felt they did belong later on and kind of what the process to get there was and how the belonging does increase over time. And so, once the testimonials were presented, then we would have a written portion where students would reflect on the videos or readings that they just listened to and watched. And they'd be asked to write about just kind of a reflection on how that might apply to their lives and how and/or how they could apply to future students' lives. And so the like the student advisory is going to be taking this on between the schools and between the members just to make sure that we can show all students that everyone can belong within school and that it's an environment, community that really is a place of welcoming and is open to everybody. So thank you for listening to that.
Can I just invite the board directors to ask any questions, but could you just speak to the experience at the workshop last week? I think it was, you all played a role in that and it was a lot of fun. And I think there was some purpose behind it that you had shared that this was something new that you wanted to do this year with student advisory. So I think giving the board some context on that might be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. So the workshop with this, one thing is that students were noticing that by the end of the year, everybody was starting to get comfortable with each other and everybody was was like starting to know everybody. And so the purpose of this was kind of to do this at the start of the year and to try to make sure everybody was comfortable. And also on like a personal note, I know it was the student advisory, there's so many amazing members who just have so many great ideas on how we can help all students. And so for some of the research that I was doing and we're going to try to continue this on as a yearly activity for the advisory to kind of at the end of the year, come up with a student advisory report on what is being observed in the district from the student perspective and what activities and initiatives we're taking on as a group. And so to be able to do that, we wanted to start early with coming up with ideas and kind of contributing our voices in directions that we could then talk about and write about as the school year went on, to kind of focus on if that answered that question.
Emerson, you facilitated some of those activities at the workshop. Can you tell us a little about that experience?
Yeah, for me as a member of student advisory, it was really important, it's important for me that I can know everybody's names and that I'm able to get different ideas from other schools so I can bring it back to my school and like vice versa. So I'm a part of Link Crew, which is like a freshman orientation group and we play like get to know each other games. And as much as people hate icebreakers, they're actually like a lot of fun if you can get into them. And it's just a really good way of getting to know each other. And I feel like if you know everybody you're working with, then you can make effective change.
Are there any other questions or comments from directors?
I also wanted to share that Emerson made me a great crown for one of the icebreaker games and made me wear it. And it was a little out of my comfort zone, but I appreciated it. It's on my shelf. I keep it as a nice momentum, memento from the student workshop.
And Emerson, I think people hate icebreakers only when they have other things they really want to get to. When you're just getting to know people and there's not another agenda you have to move on to, they can actually be kind of fun. But you're right, when you already know people and you just want to go do what you're supposed to be doing. But I'm sure that the freshmen were really happy to do something that they weren't responsible for.
I just wanna thank you for the update on the workshop, but also I love that you mapped out a very clear visual plan. It's just nice, I think this work is hard and it's challenging and you guys are coming together and leveraging what you're hearing at different schools. But that visual was really helpful just seeing how it will come to fruition. So good work. And maybe we'll have to make crowns for each other for our next, our next board workshop.
Yeah, I just, I was really proud of the students and their facilitation because we, we wanted to do this early, which means there's not a lot of time to plan. And so really, we had a dozen students that got on Zoom and in a half hour planned the workshop. And each, each student leader took a different part of that and it really came together. I thought lots of smiling faces, laughter, strong relationships, and some ideas for the year ahead. So just compliments the students to think about the idea and then to step up and to make it happen. As you all know, I like to overplan things. And so it was a little, you know, like I just had to get out of the way and they did a great job. So really appreciate them. And we'll have other members of the team like last year join you over the course of the year to give you an update on the work. So if there aren't any other questions, we can say good night to Emerson, Avery, and Nadeline and thank them for joining us. Hey, I'm gonna take us through the next parts of the presentation this evening. We have a number of different leaders that are gonna walk you through. And as in the past, please feel free to unmute it at any point and ask any questions that you would like. We'll also create some space at the end of each specific presentation to just allow for some discussion. As you know, we spent some time at our August workshop just talking about the strategic plan and where we're at with that, our mission of each student every day, and then how that breaks out into a series of strategic plan goals and action steps. And so tonight, we are looking at three of the specific areas, student-centered experience, student-centered staff, and student-centered community. In October, we'll start to focus on some of these board level goals that you identified and also looking at the dashboard that we'll be launching. But tonight, our focus is really in these three areas. And our first presentation is Kirsten Copeland, leader of our professional learning. And we're looking at the student-centered staff goal. And you can see that goal here. And I'm gonna turn it over to Kirsten to give you an update.
Good evening, directors. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and share with you guys on the work that we are engaged in in professional learning. Excuse me. Over the next two years, our vision is centered on four key areas that will drive meaningful improvements across our district. Student-centered learning is at the heart of what we do. Teachers are developing the skills to adapt their instruction based on individual student needs and feedback, which is creating more inclusive learning environments. This shift is having a particularly positive impact on priority and marginalized student groups who are beginning to show some increased engagement. Second, we're investing in job embedded learning experiences. Teachers are feeling more comfortable applying new strategies thanks to the real-time support they receive through coaching. Last year, in fact, coaches engaged in over 4,600 hours of interactions with colleagues equating to roughly 131 days of hands-on learning and collaboration. And that's making a difference in classrooms. Third, we're focused on data-driven improvement. Teachers are increasingly relying on student performance data through our data dashboards and other metrics to guide instruction and make targeted adjustments to directly support student achievement. And finally, we're focused on collaborative learning, which has become a cornerstone of our professional learning department and our efforts. And through our professional learning community, staff are engaging in meaningful collaboration focused on answering the four essential questions of teaching and learning. This collaborative approach is not only enhancing team efficacy, but also increasing accountability. These key areas assist in shifting from outputs to outcomes and are realized in our district's professional learning outcomes, which are linked in the slide deck. And so for, on the next slide related to our work plan goals, our work plan is driven by the goal of increasing access and inclusion for underserved and marginalized students. And we're committed to ensuring that all students, no matter their background, feel included and supported. To achieve this, we've set clear behavior expectations for students and are working towards equitable discipline outcomes across the district as part of our commitment to that. We're in the third year of implementing universal design for learning, which is helping us create more accessible learning environments for all of our students. Additionally, we've expanded the use of CHAMPs, our proactive management framework that provides teachers with strategies to support positive behavior and engagement. And our instructional coaching program continues to be a key driver of this work, again, offering real-time feedback and guidance to teachers as they implement these strategies in their classrooms. And so as we move on, we have our work plan goals and our measurable outcomes. And so for our first, we're setting clear benchmarks to track our progress. By the end of the 2025 school year, each school building will have identified at least one school-wide inclusive practice to support their priority groups. And these practices will be included in their school improvement plan. This ensures that inclusionary practices are integrated into the core planning and goal-setting processes at each school. By 2026, we aim to have 75% of our classroom teachers trained in CHAMPs, which we believe will contribute to a 10% increase in students' sense of belonging as measured by our Panorama surveys. This will directly support a more inclusive and positive school environment. And finally, our instructional coaches are also playing a role in these efforts. We want to support coaches and engaging in coaching with each grade-level team, at least once a trimester at the elementary level, ensuring that every teacher has access to support and guidance they need to implement these strategies effectively. All of these outcomes are closely connected to our new district dashboard and our data calendar to ensure transparent progress monitoring.
Director Decker, did you have a question?
Yes, so because there've been some questions that I've received about the school-wide inclusive practice, just wondering, so they're just going to identify one school-wide inclusive practice to support in the building?
As it's related to some of the work that we are doing with our instructional coaches and building principals, they meet monthly to engage in some inclusionary practice work in the app and how it's specifically connected to their SIP. They coincidentally had their first meeting today. And so they may be engaged in more, but we certainly don't want them engaged in less. And so from the professional learning standpoint, if we can focus on integrating that inclusive practice within the context of their environment through their SIP, that that's our starting point with them.
Okay, I just want, I know that there's still a lot of nervousness about being pushed outside of certain comfort zones. And we do need to push outside of some comfort zones, but we also need to be careful how we, how far we push. And so I was just making sure that that's what that, you know, what we were planning on doing. That sounds reasonable to me, you know, and then there'll be some that'll be ready to do a lot more. But I wanted to just clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, I think one of our shifts is to become more of a responsive on professional learning department. And so the work is really driven by the guiding coalition, the building principal, the staff at large, as to what the scope of that work looks like in their building. We are here to support and deploy resources to make that happen. And so that, that's the context for this, but I appreciate the question.
Thanks.
And okay, so our, like I'd mentioned, we wanted to, we were constantly working to keep our focus on our student learning theory of action. And our work connects directly to this. We believe that by focusing on our strategic plan and equity policies, and by using the professional learning community process as a framework for collaboration and growth, we will see meaningful improvements in both teacher practice and student learning outcomes. Our process, we hope, is more than just about fostering a culture where teachers are continuous improving or continuously improving by answering the essential questions of teaching and learning together. This collective growth will have a direct and positive impact on student learning. And then finally, just our progress monitoring, just to recap at the, where we ended at the end of last year and through August of this year, which was heavy with professional learning for our system. We've seen 171 participants engage in UDL courses. Those were offered both in-person and asynchronously through Canvas, reflecting a strong commitment to inclusive practices across our district. Additionally, we've had 600 staff members, including teachers, paraeducators, and even our bus drivers, participated in a form of CHAMPs training. And this widespread participation is crucial as we continue to work to create a consistent approach to classroom management in our various learning spaces. And I already mentioned at the beginning, but wanted to reiterate that our coaches have answered the bell and really leaned into the collaboration efforts. And last year, we're able to engage in 4,600 hours worth of coaching interactions with colleagues that are teacher requested, teacher-driven, and teacher-led. So I'm really proud of that work that they've engaged in. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Kirsten, thank you. Any other questions around the professional learning update? Okay, you're gonna see this flow really nicely into the next update. And Kirsten did a great job of referencing some of the work of the guiding coalition. And so I'm gonna reshare my screen and invite Mr. Jim Gray to share an update on student-centered staff goals three and three A. Pull that up for you, Jim.
Thank you, sir. Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. It was really difficult for me not to like pump my arms when I hear the director of PL talk about soliciting teacher voice, providing what they need to impact student lives. If you remember going back a couple of years when Carrie Van Osteren and I came to talk to you about fundamentally changing how we operate as a district to serve teachers that then ends up intentionally impacting student learning. So it's just, again, it's hard to keep from pumping my arms to say, yes, we're making progress. Now we actually have to see some numbers change, right? Like, so that's a little bit of what I'd like to kind of keep in the back of our minds as we move through here. So our two-year vision is to become an exemplar of professional learning community by leveraging the four essential teams to provide teachers what they need to impact student learning at high levels as measured by board adopted success criteria. That's a new component here now that we have some of those board adopted success criteria. So you'll see that interrelated throughout here. And then again, here's a reiteration of those work plan goals. Specifically, S3A is around the guiding coalition as a, as a progress monitoring body, not just at the building level, but at the district level too. Just as a reminder, the district level has equal representation between VEA and our teachers and the district level. So one of the, one of the complexities for us was really leveraging all of the district's capacities to move the work forward. For instance, curriculum instruction, professional learning, the multilingual learning program. So make sure that we operate, we can leverage all those pieces to move the work forward. Go ahead, Jim. So what you see here, there's, normally I wouldn't have this many measurable outcomes, but these are honestly just pulled from the other work plan goals. So if you look through curriculum instruction, if you look through professional learning, if you look through the ML team, these are all goal areas that are represented in there and actually represented in what we're progress monitoring to the goal, so to the board. So these are, at the end of the day, the measure of success of our professional learning community as a whole, which again includes the four central teams. So you can see the, all of them here. I won't bore you to go through every single one of them, but you had a piece in creating them. Go ahead, Jim. I wanted to bring this back. Kirsten had spoken about and shown the arrow that at the end of it leads to student learning. Just leveraging that the professional learning community process is the vehicle to move the work. Sometimes it's seen as a new initiative, or it's seen as what the teachers do in the classroom, but it's the vehicle for all of us to really move the work forward. We're starting to see that clarity in the system. So even the teaching and learning cabinet team drives the work through the guiding coalition as it relates to them moving the work down to the building. I'm super fired up for our guiding coalition co-leads. We're gonna have four points in the school year in which we bring them together to progress monitor, not just the building level goals, but those goals that we're monitoring the board. So you'll see that in a second too. Go ahead, Jim. So here's where we're at. And some of this will be really just a reminder of where we started and where we're going. So every building in Vancouver Public Schools has a guiding coalition. They all have established norms, sorry, mission, vision, and shared commitments. They all have them. All guiding coalitions in the district are expected to meet twice monthly. Each teacher co-lead that is staff chosen, that is a developed process between, collaboratively developed between VEA and district, and principals meet weekly. They meet weekly. The VPS guiding coalition meets twice monthly. The guiding coalition co-leads will meet quarterly this year, 9/26, so this Thursday is our first one, December 5th, March 27th, and May 29th. The focus for this year is progress monitoring student learning using established data analysis strategies that they went through the training last year. Buildings are aligning their goal setting to feed the board goals and timelines for support for reporting. So for instance, the high school level, I think Kyle will remember this specifically, had been using iReady and that was problematic to say, say it nicely. The interim assessment blocks, which are directly connected into the SBA, are being implemented this year. We're hoping that buildings will be able to use the board adopted progress monitoring. So for instance, the math goal that Brian Graham showed you, discussed with you, and in December, that is after the first interim assessment window closes, buildings will get their data, they'll be able to measure their success according to their SIP goal as it relates to the district's goal. So we're starting to see alignment in the work. You remember that we've done a ton of work around essential standards. We have the startup of some, some essential standards guaranteed, guaranteed viable curriculum in our district. So all of that is starting to align so we can really focus in on what teachers need to impact student learning. Go ahead, Jim. I think that might be the last one. Yeah, so that's, that's essentially where we're at right now. Super excited for Thursday, first co-lead meeting. Any questions? Any thoughts?
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. I'm really excited to give you, I'm really excited to come back in December, once we have that data to say we're actually changing the numbers.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it.
Yep.
I think next up, we have Jessica Roberts is on, and she's gonna talk about, we're shifting gears just a little bit to our student-centered community part of the strategic plan. And our first goal in that area is around family and community connection with the district. And so I will turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. Good to see everyone tonight. And we're just gonna talk a little bit about how we're building on the work that we started last year when it comes to the community-centered goal. So we can kind of slide through the first few slides pretty quickly. Again, our two-year vision is just that we're gonna continue working towards prioritizing, establishing strong two-way communications, relationships, and trust with our families, students, and staff. We're gonna continue to leverage the capabilities and analytics that we get from the new communication tools that we rolled out last year. So we're able to go in and like see who's messaging really often and establishing those relationships and where we may need some additional coaching. And also it will give us some insight into some tools, formatted messages that we may be able to give to teachers to help support them. So they're not having to draft everything from scratch on their own, but still establishing those relationships. And then we're also working on establishing consistent branding so that when people see our messages, they know they're from us. And also working with other departments to collaborate on sharing the best communication strategies in terms of timing, tips, and tricks that we know. Next slide. So basically, I think a lot of the stuff on this slide, it's a lot of content, but it just goes into those goals and exactly what we're gonna be doing to build those. We can go through to the next slide. We can go through to the next slide. So I also feel that our goal like a hundred percent overlaps with the C two goal, which is collaborating with families to understand and support their students with special attention for underserved and marginalized student groups. Because on the backend of the new tools, we're also able to disaggregate who's actually engaging with us. And then we're able to roll out new tools. So starting with this year, we rolled out VPS and Espanola on social media. So that in working with different people who serve this community, we're learning that literacy rates are not always as, as high as we would hope. So we need to be delivering things more verbally. So we're working with them to develop short form videos where we're delivering things verbally. And we also know that this community is really active on social media platforms. So we're meeting them again where they are and where they prefer to get information. We did a Spanish language voiceover of Dr. Snell's like, welcome back video. And we're also getting full translations and interpretation support for our immunization clinics. The new tools also translate everything into preferred languages that families use at home, which is allowing to a communication with teachers in home languages, reducing barriers to reaching those audiences. Next. And the other thing that we're doing is really looking at timing. Are we meeting families when they're ready to make decisions about things? And what we saw is that a lot of things are set up for systems of when we can do it, but not necessarily when families, especially families that are new to the area, that don't always just know this is when this happens to be dialed in. So we started measuring when are parents reading messages? When are they ready to make decisions? And when do we actually see them start engaging with different decisions? So an example that I used here are the secondary choice lotteries. Historically, these always open the first day after winter break, but we're able to see through all of our analytics that we basically lose parents and students over winter break. They like, no one's checking messages. We, we can't reach out to them to say these lotteries are about to open. And a lot of the important information we're sharing about the choices, open houses that are coming up were being missed. Because we also know that people tend to come to events. You would think, I, I think the the natural thing to assume is that if you tell people really early, it gives them all this time to plan. But we actually see that with most of our parents, the opposite is true, that they, it's like only a few day, enough that they can make arrangements, but not enough days that they forget that something's coming up because things are coming so fast. So there's kind of like a sweet spot of when we want to send a message. And that sweet spot would be hitting during winter break if we're opening the first day or the first week of January. So we've worked cross collaboratively with teams to ship that back one week. Because we know that the one week makes a huge difference in families actually receiving those messages, reading them, and then taking action, attending events. And similar things will be happening across the year. Like we're moving the elementary choice lotteries to a time when families are making decisions about kindergarten. So that they know what their choices are when they register their child for kindergarten all at the same time. It will basically be, hi, it's time to go to kindergarten. Did you know you have a choice of project based learning, dual language, dual language in the neighborhood school? Dual language, you know, completely choice school. So those are just things. And when we're talking about the strategic planning calendar, it's not so much a calendar in the traditional sense of let me see when everything is happening, but more how are our decisions and timing interacting with one another? So we're not just thinking about our lane, but everything and how it's impacting. Okay, next slide. And then we're also just taking a multimedia approach in terms of delivering the same message multiple different ways. People learn differently. They prefer, some people prefer videos, some people prefer written. And we're just really working towards not only, not just doing one tactic for getting a message across. And we're also trying to find new ways to crowdsource so that we get more content, but without having to need more staff to go out and gather it from a district level, but asking people to tell us what's happening, take their own photos and coach them through how they can do that. So one of our goals this year is to also roll out a project management form that basically is people tell us what's happening. The project management tool will help us plan it out and then we can decide what we can show up for in person and what we need to ask for some help at the school level of sending things back to us. Next. And then I talked a little bit earlier, but I think that we don't really have a strong visual brand yet in terms of what colors we're using. And I really want to start aspiring towards when people see something that we've produced, they immediately know that it's Vancouver Public Schools. That will help us really differentiate between some confusion we see in the community across school districts. Was that us? Was that evergreen? Was that canvas? And I think as we get stronger and stronger with our branding, it won't happen overnight. But when we do get there, I think that people will start differentiating a bit more, which is why you'll see even in this presentation, like we have a consistent look and feel when we're using side decks. We've rebranded the presentation screens when you're in our schools that match this. And we're also going to be working to do this across all of the different templated things that we have. We've also strongly branded everything in parent square. When you get messages from us is branded, either from VPS or from the individual school. Next. And then I just have some results to show. We supported Black Family Mingle Night, which is, was after the end of the school year last year, but this was a way to engage an equity priority group in our community. We were really happy that we were able to get fifty people there in person. It was a holiday weekend. It was again, like when people tend to get disengaged from things that we're sending out from the school district. And it was a way to really build community with that group of families. Next. Our immunization clinics is a great example of the, the sweet spot timing that I was talking about with an event. So previously we would start telling people about the immunization clinics like weeks in advance. And then it would, we would end up with these spots that were unfilled and then more and more students that weren't immunized showing up. So our approach actually made some people nervous. We had some people coming over like, when's the message going out? And we're like, we have a strategy. So we sent it out and all of the appointments, the first two days filled up within an hour. And they actually had to go out and refill like how many vaccinations they had on hand for the first couple of days for how many families showed up. So these were a great success. And I think it really showed that sometimes it makes people nervous to wait to send those messages. But if we use our analytics, we really get families engaged when they're ready to take action. Next. I don't have the full results for all of our back to school emails, but I think our back to school emails were really well planned this year. And we started again measuring like, okay, when do people start checking in on their messages coming back from summer break? And when is it too early? And we're able to really plan it out and then also have them ready and scheduled in parent squares so that we weren't like stressing and trying to do all the messages the minute that we had to send them. Next. We've also shared safety messaging and we've been really trying to tie families in. We can drive them back to our surveys. We can see how many families are engaging with the messages. We had three hundred appreciation for Superintendent Snell's email talking about safety. The appreciations are a really good way to gauge, like when people don't really know what to say, but they let us, they let us know that they did really like the message. And it tends to be reliable in terms of how positively something may be received or not. And we, I think one of the key things that was, as you know, we've had this wave of fake threats and social media and rumors. And it's been a bit stressful and that's been a nationwide thing, but I was really happy because I think our media coverage was one of the only stories that I saw where the parents actually started saying like, well, I actually got this information from the school. And it was really helpful because when I went on social media, I like lots of false things were reported there and it was really stressful. And for me, that felt like a huge win because it's there in the media. It's another parent talking to parents basically saying, please stop trusting everything you see on social media because it's really upsetting and it's inaccurate and the school is going to tell us what they're doing and how they're partnering to deal with these things. Next slide. We rolled out the hate and bias protocol. We had two hundred and thirty, or sorry, two hundred and twenty-three people appreciated this message. We were able to get four hundred and seven thought exchange participants, which again, I mean, like hundreds of people responding to a very open-ended survey is a really good return rate because we know that getting people to take surveys is one of the hardest ask in email. Especially with how busy and how much information is coming to people. And then we were able to, to deliver an FAQ and we were able to use the feedback that came in through the thought exchange to, to see that they want to know a little bit more about the curriculum. We're going to build a webpage so that going forward, even people, as people have questions about things, it helps us to inform like, okay, here's this two-way dialogue that we're really looking for. We're doing something. How do you feel about it? And then providing follow-up information that they might still have questions about. Next. We also talked about middle school sports changes. We were able to make sure that people were notified, particularly people on teams. I think that we really just included this here because some, sometimes when things are really different, people will be like, oh, we didn't get that. But we were able to go through and like identify if they got it, if it went to spam, we were able to clean up some of our lists. And then next. Oh, I thought there was another slide, but I guess we did not add an additional one in there. Are there any questions for me on that?
First of all, I want to thank you so much for all of the communication around safety. I know it was super crazy last week and just a little bit better this week. But every time I read one, I'm like, they are working so hard in the communications department. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Because the less we can get parent, adults to be focusing on social media and focusing on the facts, the better the world will be. And particularly better our kids' experiences in school will be. I do have two kind of questions. On the back to school notifications, I'd be curious to see, and maybe you're already doing this, how many late registrations we had, particularly in regard to kindergarteners as opposed to years prior. And I don't know if we've been keeping track of that, but it would be nice to see. Because I know that in our more needy schools, we always have kindergarteners that show up either the day of kindergarten or the week after kindergarten, sometime between the day of kindergarten and the next week, we have new kindergarteners showing up. So just curious, I, I would be curious to see how many late registrations we had at all, but in particular kindergarten. Because if the family's new to the school's system, then what are we? If, if that's not changing through the new kind of messaging, where the, the gaps that might be to make sure that those families are communicated with. That done already have a connection to us. And then the other, it's not really a question, but it would be also interesting to see in a few months. If you did the thought exchange or something else around the hate and bias protocol, what some of the responses would be like? Are, are things changing? Are impressions changing? Are there more positive, more negative comments?
Okay, I'm just taking notes. We can
That's what I've been taking too, so.
We can definitely do that. I don't know the answer about the back to school. I, I can check with our enrollment and attendance because I, I believe that we had a lot of success with our intake centers. And then I, I am really curious because as I mentioned, one of my goals this year is to change the timing and also the approach for how we market kindergarten enrollment. And by market, I just really mean like raise awareness, like, hey, it's time to make this decision. And I'm really hopeful that shifting that timing a little bit will really start to impact those numbers. So I have no idea. I haven't measured yet like how much impact we had this year. But I would definitely be measuring this year versus next year because that's one of the key focuses of our approach this year.
Terrific. And again, thank you for all the work you've been doing.
You're very welcome. That's what we're here for.
I know.
So I have a question, but first I'm just gonna say, I really appreciate the intentional effort around streamlining kind of all of the aesthetic. I think just as a parent on the receiving end, like things are starting to feel really consistent and familiar. And I'm, I'm learning to know what to expect and how to expect it. So your, your work is being felt. So I'll start there. My question is around the timing and I definitely understand your expertise. So I'm asking this maybe just so you can help me make sense of it. I definitely understand pushing the timing just to remind people closer in, but does it hurt to also let people know in advance just as different families have different cadences of scheduling? I mean, I know sometimes if we hit it too hard, then people just kind of tune out completely. But I'm just wondering if some families need time to schedule and coordinate. Does it hurt to have it a month in advance, but then also just a couple of days in advance?
Right. So I think I might have oversimplified it in the presentation because it is a bit nuanced and it depends on what we're sharing information about. So typically what we do, if it's just a general tactic or an event in school, is that we'll have a save the date and we'll give the date and time and just the general topic. And then we give more information really close again so that we're addressing both families. With the immunization clinics, I think just the nature that we're almost at the back to school and children are immunized. Tell us a little bit about that target audience and how they're making decisions for their family and the timelines that they're doing that. And so then that impacts the decision that we're making about when we communicated with them.
So I think this question came to me specifically when you're talking about programs of choice. Would you also have the strategy of like a, a save the date, but then more information close in?
Yes, I think we're definitely looking to do that. And then also just some of the coaching is about like, when are open houses held? So that they're similar in time so that it's not so confusing for families to figure out. Like, it's kind of like, I know the open houses for choosing the choice dates are going to be within a window of time. Obviously, they're not all going to be the same night because then that would be a problem as well. But just paying attention and making sure that we are staggering them, but also holding them within a window when people are also able to take action and make a decision.
No, that makes sense. And I appreciate that you clarified having like kind of a general save the date and then more information as I get closer. I think especially when we're advertising programs or opportunities for students wanting to make sure we don't miss people because they're not able to attend based on the notice we provide. But it sounds like you have that covered. I also, Director Zavala is not in a place where she can turn her audio on, but she just said that she is so glad we're making these changes in communication. I love that we are meeting families where it's best for them.
Great. Thank you so much.
And I, I also wanted to say, I really appreciate the VPS and Espanol and all of the efforts towards translation in our welcoming messages. I think that work is really important.
Great. Thank you so much. We're really excited about that. And I think it's gonna, well, I'm looking forward to it gaining momentum. I think it like, those things are a little bit of a slow start and then they start snowballing and we should really see ourselves picking up families over the next couple of years.
On that being, I will say, and I've heard from teachers that the auto translation in parent square has been really helpful in making connections where they previously struggled. So thank you.
Yeah. Oh, you're welcome. And I'm excited about, I just want to plug that that's been really great because it's carved out more time for our translators to really focus on one-on-one interactions and like supporting with only the very most important messages that we really need deep, deep understanding from families rather than just a sort of general understanding of what happened. So that's been really good to see going from them completely struggling to keep up with family needs to having more time to do that. what happens. So um that's been really good to see, going from them completely struggling to keep up with family needs to having more time to do that.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica, thank you so much for updating us on that goal. Um, I'm gonna keep moving us along. And the next one is related to student-centered experience. Um, but I I did want to just kind of take a moment to go through some of the information that we did share with families over the last couple of weeks um and invite any questions or comments about that. Um, as you recall, in the spring, we did some outreach around safety as well. We had some surveys. And then we also asked each of our school principals to have some safety conversations um and capture some qualitative data from families about what's important to them. Um, we pushed that information out in one of our recent messages to parents so they could see what what families were saying about safety. Both from a quantitative survey perspective and then also that qualitative uh experience where we're capturing interview comments. Um, as uh Jessica mentioned and you brought up as well, um, we have seen increased concerns related to safety. Unfortunately, that's kind of been a trend when whenever there's a national shooting that gets attention. Um, we see um amplified concerns, uh rightfully so, um lots of fear um around that. And then we also see social media posts and uh different things that that ma- maybe are inaccurate that get a lot of momentum. Um, and and so we have to investigate all those. Um, and so it's it's a very time-intensive process. And then we also need to partner with law enforcement on that. And so um we appreciate the patience, the the patience the community shares. I under- I appreciate when it's a safety thing, we want as much information as quickly as possible. Um, and so I'm glad that Jessica highlighted those in the presentation. And I know you as board directors get included on every single schools um message to families. And so there's a lot of them um that have been happening. Um, and in addition, the normal beginning of the year where we have um accidents on playgrounds and we have um buses that get hit, um things like that, right? That just happen every year when you're um managing twenty-one thousand students moving to and from every day in a school. Um, we want to talk a little bit uh tonight about the ongoing collaboration with law enforcement. I just pulled a couple of screenshots from those surveys, just so we can see kind of um what people were saying about certain things. So these are about um surveillance cameras up here. Uh, the green and the yellow are strongly and and agree, strongly agree and agree. So just visually, you can see there's a lot of energy around things like safety, surveillance cameras. This one down here is around mental health supports um um for prevention. Uh, up up here in the top is around cyberbullying and online safety. You can see that it's a little more varied a- around this just visually. And and we have different parts of the safety survey that definitely have different perspectives. Um, and then this one here is specific to school resource officers. And again, uh lots of agreement, some neutral. And then some people that really strongly disagree with these or not at all concerned about these things. So um, it's all important data and just want to kind of make that available um and make the public aware that, you know, we're asking these questions and we're processing uh through this information. Um, I organized uh the message to the community in in several buckets. Um, one was around prevention. And we just felt like it was important. And we have these on our website too, that we just felt like it was important to call it out, some of the stuff that we're working on. Um, and I I wanted to note here, and the disrupting bullying and harassment, including hate speech. This was a direct result of the hate and bias protocol. And some of the questions that came up, we wanted to give a summary of what those three to four hundred people did, contributed in thought exchange. And then we also linked an FAQ document um to the um communication that went out uh where our our team went through and tried to respond to the kind of the themes that emerged from that. Um, and then finally, just calling out that we've been able to uh secure some partnerships that have allowed us to provide increased mental health um providers in our schools, which has been awesome. I I think there's always a need for more, right? So um just kind of wanted people to know that these are things that we're working on. Um, also in some preparation to emergencies, um we've had a lot of different training and response um uh exercises. And we've moved to a standard response protocol across the region. Uh, because w- working with Clark County Sheriff's Office, being for police department in multiple districts. Um, it's just important to be all consistent in in how we're talking about things and responding to things. So um Jim has has led a lot of that work and and Dave Bennett as well. Um, uh, we also had a joint uh training uh before the school year started at Hudson's Bay High School. It was an active shooter drill. Um, where it was pretty large-staged, like lots of people involved. Um, we did a morning session, then we did an afternoon session with two different scenarios. Um, we invited um neighboring districts to come in. Um, we did observations and then what did we learn from that? So um we really appreciate uh law enforcement partners helping us with those those things. And first responders, when the ambulances come in and carrying out um victims, you know, just like going through the whole thing. Um, so lots of learning there. Um, that thanks to our community support, we have made great progress around secured entrances. Um, we've used our bonds in new schools um to kind of upgrade. And so all of our schools have a security entrance. Our our comprehensive high schools have that um with a DRO that's up at front because of the ins and outs of students all the time. Um, so those are all really great uh improvements that we've made. And we have about a thousand cameras um district-wide that, you know, we can use and and go back and look uh for information um when we need it. So um those are, and there's much, much more, but just wanted to kind of highlight some of the things. Um, you know, some of the strategies that we've been using, you know, we do drills consistently at the building level. Um, I want to talk a little bit more about our coordination with first responders, law enforcement. And then um the examples of the communication that Jessica shared uh earlier. So we also wanted to just um, you know, let our community know how they can help. And whenever we're doing threat assessments, the number one thing, well, there's so many number one things that we're trying to assess. But one of those is availability and access to weapons. Um, and so we work with law enforcement to um interview families, um sometimes do home checks, like what is the access to weapons? And um, you know, obviously, we don't want students to have weapons at school. And if they don't have access to weapons outside of school, then, you know, it's it's, we're increasing our odds of of good outcomes. Um, and so that's something we just want to remind people of. Um, the rumor control and patience, we talked a little bit about that, like our goal is to share accurate information as quickly as we can. Uh, and we need to verify what we're sharing before we push things out. And we need to protect confidentiality um laws and 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 process that we have in place. Um, and then, you know, as you know, um, consistent resources are really important. And last year, you know, we reduced some of our um uh staff that are responsible for supervision and safety. Our DRO team was reduced, other places were reduced. Uh, I just want to remind, and and I, you saw some correspondence with with um stakeholders that had concerns about, you know, why don't we have more? I wish we did, right? Um, this is the prototypical school model and the number of allocated staff members on the classified side that we get. And it's way less than what you've provided uh to us through your adopted adopted budgets. And so we're using grants, we're using local levy to offset that. And I know that we would want to do more if we could. Um, and so just want to make sure people are aware of that information. Uh, so our um our next steps are, we really need to kind of clarify some of those survey results that I showed you and have you as a board process through that. And I know we have a workshop in October that I'm hoping to kind of talk about that a little bit more. Um, and then we also, a lot of the things that we talked about, like secured entrances, those kinds of things are definitely um, we have used levy resources or tech levy to support that. And we have a renewal coming up in uh February. So I want to prevent uh present options to you um for your consideration on what should be in that renewal package. Um, security cameras would be another area uh potentially could find its way into that. So I I'm gonna pause there. And um, first of all, Jim, is there anything that you would want to add um to the conversation?
No, sir. Well said. Thank you.
So just any questions or comments from the board? Yeah.
I I'm just curious um how the energy at um school events has been, like from a safety perspective this fall. I mean, I've heard really positive feedback, but um I know as we get big crowds and and a little smaller staff, like how that's going.
Do you want to comment on that one?
Yeah, essentially, depending upon uh the event, obviously, like a Friday night football game might have more security staff. Um, there's always a collaboration between the building administration um and the security staff. Um, we have some pretty good protocols in place, say, for instance, at Kiggins or at Columbia River Football Stadium, where people have the different spots they're supposed to be in, who, you know, one of the big considerations is uh the ticket boxes and how they're transported, uh, right? There's this whole security protocol around that, following the administrator with the DRO. Uh, who's on duty. So um oftentimes, if we have to add additional DROs, there's a cost involved in the building level as well as the district level. So um, one example might be, at the end of this fall, we'll have uh Camus come out uh play Skyview, which will be a massive, massively attended game at Kiggins Bowl. We'll add additional DROs and then reach out to uh our law enforcement partners. Uh, not just for security of the event, but there would be, you know, traffic considerations too. So um it's all part of the same um equation though. But this fall, it seems to be going uh pretty well, uh knock on wood.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, on that survey with the uh colors, um, my only concern about the results, and you said you were gonna do more about it. My my only concern is uh how many people responded? What were their demographics? Um, who did we miss? Things like, you know, the normal things that from surveys, they get so skewed. Um, so I want us to not necessarily use that as a the only tool to talk about what is concerning our community.
Great point. And I think one that we learned through the strategic plan process, right, a layered approach of getting uh input from our community and doing some direct outreach. I think the the area that has us most um wondering what the next steps are is the role of law enforcement. Uh, I think that um our our model for an SRO um pre-COVID is probably different than we would like to see a model of an SRO now. Um, but I can't tell you how important it is to have consistent relationships between law enforcement and and um we don't have a designated position uh right now. Uh, we rely on the relationships that we have with law enforcement. And uh depending on the time of day or who's working or not working, right, you may or may not get uh somebody that's very familiar with schools. Um, and so w- we worry about the sustainability of that over time. Like, I think our our goal would be to have some sort of positions um that are directly responsible for an in- interplay between uh Clark County Sheriff's in our district and VPD in our district, in whatever fashion that turns out to be. Um, like, I I would say daily, this year, we have engaged with law enforcement at least multiple times, right? And sometimes it's about a missing student, right, that, you know, didn't come home after school or a parent's worried. Other times, it's about threats. Um, most of the time, it's about safety prevention or response. Um, and I think we uh we, there might be, um, we definitely don't want officers like engaged with student discipline and things of that nature, but we do want uh law enforcement to have a positive relationship with our schools and and our students. So we just need to probably talk more about that. Um, and uh what you would like to see as a board, and I know you're gonna want to know what the community wants. And so uh one of our next steps is to do some targeted outreach, basically what you were discussing, Director Decker, around some of those um survey questions that had a lot of different colors, right?
Yeah, but yeah, and um, you know, there's a lot of, with all of the um horrible things that have happened recently since school started in other communities. Um, there's a lot of news stories on about how different communities handle the outreach, law officer outreach. And I know a couple of states actually. And it would be wonderful if our state did had trained officers financed by the state that are trained it by the school district. And it was like, well, that, that would be great. But again, we'd have to have a financing.
Yeah, and it's also like difficult to navigate with, there's an elected Clark County um councillor's positions, right? There's an elected city council, elected school board. We're navigating with a lot of different organizations that
And an elected sheriff, right? The good Clark County Sheriff changes depending, you know, election, election. The VPD is appointed, but he just announced he's retiring. So um, but anything that's elected can go hundreds of different ways, so.
Yeah. So we we're gonna continue those conversations. Would want to know more from you too. Um, I know that uh Director Barrows, you've done some research, have provided us with some great um thoughts around uh SRO program. Um, the other complicating thing is there is not um the resources to just say, okay, like, let's say you told me you want an SRO in every school. Well, they wouldn't be able to provide an SRO in every school. So there has to be like this transition plan to whatever we want. Um, and Clark County Sheriff's Office, we've been, um, the last three and a half years, we meet quarterly even with them and VPD. And and they were able to provide some SRO staffing, um which uh Battleground School District was able to take advantage of. But they have two high schools that that they're staffing. One was already staffed with Battleground Police Department. So it made a lot of sense for them just to add and then have both schools with similar service models. Here in Evergreen and in Vancouver, we would need a combination of VPD and Clark County Sheriff's Office. And I I don't think that we should have a plan that just has one school get something and another school doesn't, right? Like, we need to be thoughtful about that as well. So there's a lot of complicating um variables in this. And just just kind of want to tee that up for you all um over the next, you know, several months to be thinking about.
Who created a school district that was in a county and in a city district? Makes things a lot more difficult.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Thank you.
All right, then I will share the last topic that we have tonight, which is also getting a lot of energy. Um, and this is our cell phone policy. And uh the board has um, you know, discussed this in the August workshop and had some next steps um for me. And we're kind of moving forward with that as a team. So I think the the first question is that um you've all been very thoughtful about, like, what is it that we're trying to do? Right? Um, and what is the um the problem or the challenge that's really giving us angst and all this energy? And I think in general, I've heard, right, like worried about the amount of screen time, worried about the presence when we're in a learning system uh in a learning uh setting, worried about some of the online social media um bullying and harassment, some of those things. There was a question about that in the safety slide that I shared. Um, so that's kind of the big picture. And so then, like, what do we want to do about that? And what do we think would be most helpful? Um, and as a school board, like you have, um, you know, you obviously uh have the budget, um, and then you have policy is a real, those two are real strong levers that you can um uh exercise, I guess, to try to uh affect change in our district. Um, the goals, the strategic plan, things of that nature. But you're also really reliant on all the staff to um make that happen uh consistently, right, across the system, which takes time and training and all that stuff. So um, as you know, our current policy does support, um, you know, cellphone regulation, I guess, at the school and classroom level. And the question is like, is there need to be more um uh more support than what the current policy says? Or is there other strategies as well that could help with this? Um, so we did launch a survey uh just yesterday. Uh, we did to high school students, to um uh families, parents and staff. Uh, and we do have scheduled uh our first staff advisory next Wednesday where we will um start to look at that data. Um, but I also polled uh today as of eleven-thirty, we had over three thousand six hundred families take the survey already. Um, I don't know how many use their phone or not, like, right? Like, so some of this is like weird, right? Because we know, like, some of the things that we're trying to solve, and yet we're so reliant on the on the device itself. So like, these are the things that we're wrestling with. Uh, but these are some of the summaries, the the families, the survey results indicate a strong consensus. Uh, but these are some of the summaries that the families, uh the survey results indicate a strong consensus amongst amongst uh participants on the need for clear cellphone guidelines in schools with a significant portion believing that cellphone use can negatively impact learning and lead to behavioral issues. Again, really high level, right? There's tons of different perspectives in those three thousand six hundred responses. Um, at the student level, we had over eleven hundred as of eleven thirty today. Um, again, strong awareness and varied opinions among high school students regarding cellphone use policies. Um, there is a specific emphasis, and I saw this in the family thread as well, on cell phones for safeties and emergencies, right? And obviously, that's front and center. Um, lots of experiences with that. Uh, and then finally, the staff, we had over six hundred and forty-eight, um as of eleven thirty, more afterwards. Um, strong consensus amongst particip- amongst part, among participants on the need for clear guidelines, uh significant concern about the negative impact uh of cellphone use on student behavior and learning. So I don't think that probably surprises you too much. Uh, I can tell you that when we have asked for survey thoughts on other topics, we did not get uh, you know, five thousand responses in less than twenty-four hours. Um, so it's definitely something that's on um top of mind for people. Um, with that one, once we start to process some of this information through our advisories, um, we wanna loop back to you uh with some thoughts and potential next steps. And of course, of course, we'll include you in some of the um overall data as well, so you can review that. Um, but just wanted to call it to people's attention and um let you know that we're working on that. So I'll I'll pause here again and see if there are any questions or comments or concerns.
I'm excited to see the full results when that survey closes.
Okay, well, that's what I had for you this evening. Um, we highlighted uh student-centered staff with our professional learning and uh PLC work. Uh, we highlighted student-centered community with Jessica and the communications update. And then student-centered experience, um thinking about safety and and cell phones. Uh, and then we had our student advisory do an update as well. So um, now that you've um given kind of the go-ahead on the the goals that you would like to um assess over the year, then we are, we pretty much have through December kind of planned out, at least rough draft of the types of presentations that you'd be seeing um when and where and and the kind of detail um that you would like. And of course, I'm always ready to adjust that based on what you need and when you need it. Um, so but we're excited to get going on it. Um, typically, October is a pretty heavy study session as well. Um, we also had the workshop in October. So um we'll have a lot of opportunity to dig into this in the next six weeks.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have the date for the October one?
It's Which one, the study session or?
Sorry, for the workshop.
Yeah, it's after the committee of the whole meeting, I think on October fifteenth.
Okay. It's not on our calendar, sorry. Sorry.
Um, are there any more comments or questions from board directors? I saw that um Director Zavala just added to the chat. Thank you everyone for hard work. Appreciate it and noticed. Um, I'll echo that sentiment. Thank you for all the presentations tonight. Okay, um, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Uh, our next board meeting is October eighth, a regular board meeting at Bates Center. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.